At six o'clock, I'd like to call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, September 22nd, 2025, 6:00 PM. If we could stand for pledging allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, would you call the vote, please?
Ludwig?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Rines?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
All right, I would entertain a motion to excuse council members Jenkins and Rines.
So moved.
Thank you both, to have support.
Sure.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes that need to be noted.
Will you approve?
Thank you, do I have support?
Okay.
Thank you both. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anyone in the gallery that would like to come forward? You have your hand up first. Please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Dorothy Hart, retired Lake Township Supervisor, current Lake Township Representative to NISA and NISA Chairperson. In follow-up to the August 25th city council meeting, which I attended, to get clarity of what the council is asking in NISA reporting, Mr. Hanson gave his subcommittee NISA report at that meeting, to which during audience participation, the second one, I disagreed with his misinformation accusations of smokescreen and lies with no facts presented for his claims. The mayor told me after the meeting that she would call me, which she did after I called her twice unsuccessfully to get the clarity. She said she did not want the number of personnel and vehicles responding to calls. She seemed interested in the source of the News &amp; Views Calls Report information, which she thought to be Calls Report from 911. I can confirm the mayor is correct about the report information origin. The mayor suggested a meeting to discuss reporting. Here I am. Apparently, many NISA employees and NISA board members watched the August 25th council meeting video and were frustrated and upset by Mr. Hanson's misinformation and accusations toward NISA and Chief Yance. And again, I'll repeat that. Apparently, many NISA employees and NISA board members watched the August 25th council meeting video and were frustrated and upset by Mr. Hanson's misinformation and accusations towards NISA and Chief Yance. I have discontinued the monthly Calls Report, which I had previously prepared for the Lake Township Board and shared it with the NISA Board. The monthly Calls Report will now be prepared by NISA staff on an Excel format. Same information, different format. Again, it'll be the same information, different format. The October 9th NISA meeting, to be held at the Weberville Station, will have the newly-formatted monthly Calls Report and the quarterly Calls and Response Reports, to which NISA is hopeful that all six participating municipalities will find satisfactory. Let's stop the misinformation and accusations of smokescreens and lies. Are the accusations based on facts, which can be shared with NISA to address, or is this slander? And I do have a couple copies of the Fallville News &amp; Views. I don't know if any of you get it. It does have Williamson Report in it, so it is a nice little newspaper. I'll leave those here. And I have another obligation, so I will leave you, but thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dorothy. Anyone else for audience participation at this time? You can come forward. State your name and address, please.
Elizabeth McElroy, 450 Red Cedar Boulevard. I just had a question. I could not find anything regarding a noise ordinance for the city.
Do we have one? There is loose language, and I am going to actually, I won't have a chief address this because there is not a quiet time, or, but if there is a nuisance, you can call and make a complaint. We are complaint-based. Chief, would you like to elaborate on that?
No, I agree. We do not have a noise ordinance, per se. It's more of a nuisance ordinance, so it doesn't talk about dates or doesn't talk about times or time of day.
Okay.
Have you had a, well, this is actually for audience participation. Tell us what your problem is. We're not going to discuss it right now, but we'd like to hear what it is, and then, you know, we may talk about it a little bit later.
I backed up to the new construction on Valley Road, and I was told, not officially, that there would be construction six days a week for 12 hours, from like seven to seven or something. So that's why I tried to look up the noise ordinance and want to not have to hear that at.
Okay. And Elizabeth, what was your address again? I'm sorry.
450 Red Cedar Boulevard.
All right, thank you so much.
That's it, thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation at this time? Yes, you have, can you?
What about the golf carts? Is that going to be discussed later?
We have it as a first reading of the golf cart ordinance that was presented at our last council meeting, so it's a first reading.
So we'll get up, we can get up and say then?
Why don't you come up and go ahead and share with us what you have? State your name and your address, please.
Yes. Caroline Cannavale.
And your address?
126 Block Street, Williamson.
Okay. And Caroline, what do you have for us this evening?
Excuse me?
What do you have for us this evening?
Well, when we were discussing the golf carts a couple meetings ago, somebody said we couldn't be on the lawn in the park.
That is correct.
Where are we going to park them? We can't find parking places. That's why we bring the golf cart, so that we can park on the lawn and...
So I will address this, but again, this is audience participation, but we have multiple parking lots within that vicinity. We have the small parking lot to the north of the restrooms. We have the parking lot where the farmer's market is traditionally held. We have street parking on Cedar Street next to the Catholic Church. The Catholic Church also has a parking lot. At the school, we have two back parking lots right here. We have the parking lot at Mill Street. So there should be ample parking for any golf carts that are going to attend.
Well, when we come to the functions down here before, and it's been full, and you couldn't find a place to park, you've been up and down the street at High Street, you know?
We'll probably talk some more about what possible parking will look like. We'll address that. But I believe as our ordinance is written this evening, there's no parking on the grass.
Okay. Is the ordinance being?
It's a first reading for this evening, so it goes through a process, first reading, second reading, and then we adopt it.
Okay. Another thing, what about those of us who have gas engines? Why are they deleting those? Or make an exception to that of those?
I think we've covered that in all of our council meetings, that this ordinance is just for electric golf carts.
Why is that?
We are not approving gas engines.
Is there a reason for that?
That'll be something that we'll probably discuss at a later time, but right now, this is just an electric vehicle golf cart ordinance.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this time for audience participation? Hi, Terry.
I hate to disappoint, so...
That's okay. Come on up, you know the drill.
Yep. Okay. Give me a minute here. So this is what you're telling me, the appropriate time for the ordinance?
No, we're going to have a first reading in our action items, but if there's anything you'd like to share with council right now during public participation?
Concerning how it's written?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I know at the last meeting, I had asked you, and I believe I got the response of, I asked why it wasn't being considered as a resolution, even though it says we can do that, and you said we're an ordinance-driven...
Community.
Yes, thank you. So I can't help but wonder how the social district has one as a resolution. And I'm going to go on, because I only have limited time. The other thing that, I tried to organize this really well. Okay. Concerning the registration list. Okay. The section says that one of the meetings, one of the council members mentioned, oh, this is going to be extra work for the staff. Okay. This says, and which is why I submitted it, so people would know I wasn't making crap up, that this says it may, we may require the golf cart registration, meaning we don't, the city doesn't have to. So, you know, that kind of, and the other things that were being asked for at the ordinance, as it's written, that I found really concerning was the use of seatbelts. And when I looked this up today, it says that seatbelts are not federally required, because, and that denotes that it is a different type of vehicle, meaning the slow-moving vehicle. So I think that should be eliminated, and I found it weird that nobody mentioned, you know, the triangle sign for slow-moving vehicle? That's what denotes that. But that was nowhere in here, and I just can't help feeling that we have been working against, this shouldn't be that hard to pass. So I don't believe that the city can require that, and if you, I do have a copy of where it says that federally it is not required, because that denotes it's a slow-moving vehicle, which puts it in a whole different category. And the, let's see. I tried to organize this, because there were so many things that were, I think, overkill as far as safety. I can tell you right now that in the last two weeks, in front of my house, and they wanted, you know, proof of liability, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Well, I believe that's a two-way street that the city needs to provide some stuff. My neighbor Kitty Corner had a tree that was on the city property, fallen in her house. She had to pay for the damage to her house from that. Also, one of the kids in the neighborhood, who rides his bike, because our street level is not the same as the curb or whatever you call it, the lip, he fell on his bike. I looked down, I was sitting on my porch. He's holding his head, and so I whipped down there, and I'm thinking, okay, old brother. The other neighborhood kids, none of which wear helmets, but that's their choice and their parents' choice. They kept calm and said, you know, you're okay, but I could see blood coming from his head. So I had to, I could have thrown him in my, I felt like I couldn't even take him in my golf cart, which was handier than getting my car out of the garage, putting him in the backseat, because I had no idea how much he was going to bleed, and he would have not fallen had it not been for the road being this less than the curb, or whatever you want to call it. And the other one was one of the kids who, on a different block, but close, they all ride through here. I almost hit her. She rode so fast on the bike that I looked, it's a good thing I always stop and double-check when I get to the end of my driveway, that she, all those kids were at the far end of, what street do I live on? Fulton. And by the time I got to the end of my driveway, I started to go out, my beepers on the thing didn't pick her up, and I happened to see her in my rearview mirror, because I always look. I could have hit her.
Terry, your comment is wrong.
All right. Well, I hope that, you know, you guys take into account accidents do happen. Nothing is foolproof, and I, for one, and I'm sure some others, would like the choice whether we want to ride in the street on a golf cart, which I feel safer than I do on the regular road.
Thank you, Terry.
Sorry I'm worked up, people, but it shouldn't be this difficult.
We appreciate your comments. Anyone else for public comment at this time that would like to come forward? All right, moving along. I've got my council meeting minutes of September 8th, 2025. I'm looking for approval, and those are changes to be noted.
Will you approve?
Thank you. Do I have support?
Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Terry, it's your turn. Where'd the money go?
What happened to all that money? Well, today's report, today's episode, is almost $1 million. It's a really big number.
Yes.
But the good news is that 82% of that was just transferred from Williamson through us to other governmental units. 82%. So are your taxes high? Yes, they're high. Do they go to the city of Williamson? They go through the city of Williamson, okay? 80% of the revenue. And just of a note to the, on the side, we spend about $9,000 every two weeks on city lights, streetlights, and we also spend about $9,000 mowing that turbine up there. And was it 20 years to get the thing done, or was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, 20 years, so, but it finally got done.
Heck, it was out there over 100.
Yeah.
You know, 1875.
And I'm pretty sure that all the parks, I was at Parks and Rec this way, and all the Parks and Rec people were very happy with the turbine.
Yeah, it was great. Piece of history.
So that's the accounts payable thing, so I'll make a motion to approve EFT 1763, checks 7857778600, and ACH 1750 to 1775, for a grand total of $944,880.17.
Thank you, Terry. Yes?
Hey, I have a question.
Yes, John?
Since I'm not in a position of a councilperson, what value do those taxes do for the city, for the ISD? What value are they bringing that we have what?
So are you talking about like the millages, or the, for the operating expenses for Inver County School District, for CADA, for?
No, just for the ISD.
For the ISD. John, would you like to answer that?
I'll do the best I can. So that's the intermediate school district, so it's generally the provision of special education and things like that. I can't say that I'm an expert on what they provide, but it is a tax that we collect and pass through that.
Is it a tax that the city can opt out of?
We can.
That's what I'm asking.
No, we can.
But great question, because I do think it's important to know that when our residents pay their summer and their winter tax bills, and if they really look at it, they will see that we don't keep that much. For every dollar that we bring in, we keep right around 20 cents for our own operating. A lot of that goes out to all of these other entities, the millages that are passed when we go to the Falls de Bogue, and just like that, Inver County School District, Lansing Community College, the airport, the Juvenile Detention Center, Ketteleri City District Library, and the list goes on and on and on.
And NISA.
And NISA.
Are all those things on there by election?
Yes. Most of them are on there by election. It's the millages that get passed. The others are pass-throughs that are, we have a municipality responsibility for, but... Thank you, Terry. So I have a motion on the floor for accounts payable. Do I have support?
Yeah, one second.
Second. Holly, would you call the vote, please?
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Delroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right. Now we're going to move into our action items. We have several. I don't believe they will all take a lot of effort, but the first is the first reading of the golf cart ordinance. We do have a memo in our packet from our city manager, Don Hanifin. I am going to go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, Don Hanifin, because I do think if you could indulge us, if you could just give a quick definition of why we have a first reading, second reading, and then it goes for the final vote, and just for viewers and our audience.
Sure, but by way of introduction, we've had, you know, by my count, probably about an hour and a half of council discussions over three meetings, and probably rattling down a little bit to get to this point. So what's included tonight is a first reading of the ordinance. It does try to encapsulate the discussion today, including the consensus points that were discussed at length at council, age of ridership, streets prohibited or not, et cetera, et cetera. So all of those are in the first reading of the ordinance. As far as for ordinances, it's just by charter that we're, per charter, you know, city established a charter, was adopted by the state of Michigan to allow us to be a home rule city. It's our process for when we adapt ordinances. So there's a first reading, and council can, you know, discuss that at as much detail as they like, or not, and then we would set that, if there is an amendment to the language, we'd set that, cover those either tonight, and then set those for the second reading. Staff is recommending that you do approve the first reading. Number two on the list of action items, set a public hearing for October 13th. That was a request a council member, Jenkins, made, I think, two meetings ago, to have a public hearing for prior to the second reading, and then you would also set the second reading for the actual decision.
All right. Okay. All right, so council members, what we have in front of us is the ordinance and with the changes that have been made, that have been from our many discussions. The last council meeting we had with those particular items, I gave each council member an opportunity to voice their opinion on whether we should change something, whether we should keep it, and based on, you know, what that looked like, that has been woven into this ordinance. We did have a city resident ask about some safety issues again. However, I feel like, you know, we relied upon our chief of police, based on motor vehicle law for the state of Michigan, that he brought forward what, in his opinion, for our community, for the police department, in order to be able to enforce what those safety requirements are. I don't know, Chief, if you want to weigh in on a triangle sign on the back of a golf cart. I'm assuming, because if we do an internal registration here at the city, there is not going to be that state of Michigan license plate, so to speak. It's going to be a registration sticker.
Right. So as far, as far as the red triangle, there, I found only one ordinance around Michigan that requires a red triangle. In fact, really, in the motor vehicle code, it doesn't talk about a red triangle in any vehicle. So I don't see if that's needed.
Okay.
We already, I'm requiring that the golf cart have taillights, brake lights, so I don't think the triangles, it's not an issue.
Okay. And then, just to speak again, Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, that is your basis for safety and for the necessity of seatbelts, correct?
Yes.
We had a resident up here earlier that said federally they're not required, but can you give a little bit of an explanation as to why Michigan Vehicle Code would require it?
Yeah, I'm not sure where the federal requirement comes from. We operate under the state of Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, not federal regulations, but through safety, safety standards overwhelmingly, a golf cart already is in an unsafe mode of transportation, but taking a seatbelt out of it makes it all that much more unsafe. So it's a safety feature. Virtually every city ordinance around Michigan requires seatbelts. There's a few that don't, but most do.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, council members, I'm going to open it up, and Terry, you had your hand up first, so...
So I guess the two that I'm interested in are Owasso and Mason. Do they require seatbelts? Do you remember?
If you give me a minute, I'll find that.
Too specific.
All right. That's okay. While Chief is looking up that information, because he does have a very nice stack of data and information in front of him, anyone else want to come in on this first reading?
I was, you know, going through everything this afternoon. My biggest concern is school time, because we have sunrise, sunrise.
Oh, yes, sunrise, sunset.
So now we've got buses, we've got people come bringing their kids in from other places, let alone, so my biggest concern would be during that time. We have people bringing their kids in golf carts.
And getting in the drop-off line.
They're doing 15 miles an hour, people are in a hurry. Just something I want to throw out there.
Yep.
Because that is something where, now you've got buses involved, and people want to get to work, and they're going to be 15 miles an hour, 25. So just something to throw out there.
All right. So Chief, I'm going to tack that on after you find that information from Mason and Owasso.
I will. I may have to have you rephrase it. Owasso does require seatbelts.
Okay.
And like I said, virtually every ordinance I reviewed requires them, and for Mason... It does not look like Mason requires a seatbelt.
Okay. All right.
Nope, they do not.
Okay.
It was a question that councilman...
Okay. So Councilman Ludwig was asking, and because I know that you are very intimate with the drop-off and pickup loop at the elementary school, do you feel that we need to push back the start time of, you know, we said one hour after sunrise, people would be allowed to drive golf carts, but do you feel that golf carts will have an impact in traffic over at the elementary school?
I can't speak about school properties, private property. We don't control their property.
But in that drop-off loop?
Yeah. Anytime you put a lower-speed vehicle in with higher traffic, or any other type of vehicle, it's going to cause disruption.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't think that's advisable.
Okay. All right, so then approximately how long does drop-off take in that particular area?
In the morning, the middle left turn ends at 8:45, so is it 8:45, pretty much done at the elementary school, then afternoon, 3:50-ish?
All right. So are you getting ready to reach your hands? All right, yes.
I just wanted, it's one and a half hour.
Oh, it's a half hour after sunrise?
Yeah, before and after.
So in your opinion, Chief, what would be a best solution for start time during the school year with golf carts? And do we modify the ordinance to recognize that?
And what about when school is out in the summer?
I'm sorry. Terry, I'm sorry, I didn't call on you, so I'm going to ask that, if I call on public comment, I'll recognize that, but right now, we're discussing this up here.
I think you'd have to adjust the ordinance if it's, if you don't want the golf carts to operate in or around the school, or in drop-off and pickup, you'd have to prohibit it from that area somehow in your language, or adjust the times.
Adjust the start times. Okay. Council members? Yes, Terry?
We already have lots and lots and lots of restrictions on golf carts, and we have a 10-year study on golf carts in Williamson that says golf carts don't get in the way of school pickup, golf carts don't get involved with semi-trailer trucks doing deliveries in the industrial area, golf carts don't give a problem in South Putnam, and golf carts work fine without seatbelts and windshields and all that kind of stuff. So to add more restrictions, I think it's a human sort of a thing, you know, to do that, and governments, it's just like they're, they just, they can't help themselves to do that.
Right. No, you're right. You're right. All right. Here's what I'll say on that. I think because we do, we are sunsetting this in two years, we're going to collect all the data, and because we're a complaint-based community, I have a feeling that we're probably going to get some calls regarding golf carts out there, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent.
Do we change the ordinance at 7:01?
Yes, we can change an ordinance at 7:01. We can rewrite something. I mean, yes, through the chair, or through the city manager.
Subject to our process that's established. You can do that.
Yep. Yep. So I guess what I would say is I do not feel we should change our safety requirements. I think what we all came up with as a council is good. I say we let it roll with our start time, end time, and let the community give us that feedback. If all of a sudden there's problems in the drop-off loop, let them call us and tell us. Scott?
Yeah, I wanted to comment. The public response referred to parking on the grass, and we have said we're not supposed to do that, but I do want to say that Williamson has a history of getting along with parking, and it started when we decided to put the football field in downtown, and now when they come, there is parking all over the place. People understand that when you go to D&amp;W, you might not get a spot on a football field. It's just part of our culture.
Right.
So I would prefer to see, we... So I would prefer to see leniency towards golf carts go.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm not sure how you would word it, but I would prefer to see it more lenient sort of like, you know, well, I mean, I hate to say go over where you want. Nevertheless.
I think we can work on identifying maybe golf cart parking spots and maybe come up with some signage. That it's, you know, golf cart only. I don't know how many golf carts ban jail night, but John, that's probably something we can work on in one of our parking lots over next to McCormick Park.
The way the ordinance is written, it says golf carts may not be operated on or parked on sidewalks or areas designated for the use of pedestrians. So, I mean, I think the concern there is making sure that, you know, the open green space doesn't look like the, you know, the seventh fairway over at Brookshire. So we don't want people ripping across. So we can, we can be creative with something like that.
Okay, yes, Tim.
And then subsequently, it says golf carts must abide by all parking rules and limits. So that is incorporating whatever separate parking rules and limits there may be.
Yes, Terry?
I wanted to point out that during our discussion last night, we came up with five things that we weren't, we didn't agree on. And we voted on all five of them.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Yes, we did, and it's been incorporated into this ordinance.
And that's, that's the way to do it.
All right. Then I'm looking for a motion to move this first reading forward, if one of you would like to make that.
Make a motion to move the first reading forward.
All right, thank you. Holly, will you call the role, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yes.
All right, so by moving this forward, that will set the public hearing for October 13th. Or do we need a separate motion?
Separate motion.
Okay, can I have a motion for setting a public hearing for October 13th, 2025?
Make a motion to set a public hearing for October 13th, 2025.
Thank you, do I have support? All right, Holly, will you call the role for the public hearing, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yes.
Now I'm looking for a motion to set the second reading for October 13th, 2025.
Make a motion to make the second reading for October 13th, 2025.
Do I support? Holly, will you call the role, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our next action item is to set a joint meeting with the Williamstown Township. We have a memo in our packet from our city manager, John Hanifin. This is something that we do annually, where we bring the township representatives together. And we also usually have some other entities that join us, NESA, chief of police, Cavalier District Library, the senior center. And we ask those four representatives to come and share information. We do have a recommended motion on this memo unless there are questions to be asked. And I'm looking for a motion for this action item.
Do you want to discuss the date first? There's four proposed dates, two that are bad, two that are good. So John recommends there's two, Wednesday and Tuesday.
Yep.
Do you have any preference on that?
I don't.
There's two days, is October 15th or Wednesday?
October 15th or 28th. So I'm good with either date. Okay. Do you have a preference, John? All right, let's go with October 15th. You're taking this one.
I'll make a motion to set a joint meeting with Williamson Township for October 15th, 2025.
Thank you, do I have support?
Thank you.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the role, please?
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson? Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes. All right, next is set a public hearing date for the Tifa plan amendment. We have a memo in our packet from our city manager, John Hanifin Olson. Send it over to him.
Just if I could rewind just a bit, for the joint meeting, it is our turn to host that meeting. So here it's kind of tight to have all those folks in here. So this will be our last resort, otherwise we'll come up with a suitable location. Possibly the school board room or someplace. Yeah, so Tifa did amend, approve an amendment to its tax increment, finance and development plan for the sale of the ice house to the CODATS. That is subject to the approval of the Tifa plan amendment. So that requires a public hearing for that amendment process. So what we're asking for tonight is that you set the public hearing for the regular council meeting of October 13th, 2025, at 6:05 PM. And the, this is right, the resolution language there is right from the Tifa amendment. But it's a lot of words. It says that we're, we have a new ice house buyer and that expects to close in late 2025.
All right, great. It looks like that recommended motion is in our memo. I'm looking for somebody to move that forward.
Make a motion to have a public hearing be set for the Marion City Council meeting on Monday, October 13th, 2025, at 6:05 PM.
Thank you, do I have support? Thank you. Holly, will you call the role, please?
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
John, which took more, the turbine or the ice house?
Well, turbine's older, so on a, you know, glacial timeline, probably the turbine. But as far as the actual process, the.
Process of the city dispelling will be.
Ice house, the cities, well, Tifa's last city is only ice house for about 24 years now. It's been a minute.
It's been a minute.
All right. Next on our action item list is the industrial park property donation agreement. We have a memo in our packet. I'm going to turn this back over to city manager John Hanifin to explain what's happening.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So what's presented for your action tonight is to approve the donation agreement with GCC2 LLC, a Michigan limited liability corporation. They're commonly referred to as Granger. And they have proposed a donation of their vacant property, industrial park, to the city of Williamson. So the attached donation agreement was prepared by our general counsel, Mr. Perron. It does include the property descriptions, legal property descriptions there. Does allow, the donation agreement allows some time for some due diligence on the city's parks. We talked before about doing some environmental reviews, but, and we will do that, you know, just kind of recap the history. The property was, it's currently vacant. It was owned by the city previously to the sale to Granger. So I don't anticipate any, any issues there, so.
I did have a thought, I'm not a genius at those situations, these things. But the thought gave me was the idea that can we sell this for less because we're going to have somebody build something and then we're going to collect the tax?
Yes.
There's two considerations. One, the property, we can go through a development agreement process and get more specifically what the city would like to see. I think that's one of the primary reasons. And then, well, we certainly aren't giving the property away. The valuation, the taxable value on that property is less. And so from, on a pro forma standpoint, the city will realize that tax benefit once it becomes part of the tax rolls again forever.
I guess maybe more what I'm getting at is the tax that's been sitting there for so long and nobody's bought it. We're in a situation to alter the situation where it could be done or sold, right?
Correct.
Yes, I'm sorry, Terry.
If my understanding is the timing on this is important to source the taxes and stuff like that? And we're respecting the timing so that the, so that the people giving the, so the Grangers happy with it, right?
Correct, yeah. The idea is that this would close before the, before the end of the year. And the other thing is that the, because of the valuation, the way their property is being valued for the, valued the donation, which is a personal property, a personal tax deduction, it's not a property deduction. They require the agreement to be within 60 days of the closing.
Cool, good. We're going to do that.
So in a nutshell, our industrial park property that has sat vacant for a very long time, it was originally owned by the city of Williamson approximately how many years ago, John?
Twenty-some.
Twenty-some years ago, the city of Williamson made a decision to sell that property to Granger Construction. Granger Construction has held it for a very long time with no movement on that property. And one of those kind of little catch-22s was is that if somebody was interested in buying the property out there, Granger Construction wanted to be the construction company that built on that property. So they've approached the city. They've asked if we would like the property back as a donated property back to the city. And that's what this is all about. And it gives us now the ability, once this agreement goes through and we close on it, it gives the city of Williamson the opportu- opportunity now to work with a commercial real estate or a developer and actually see some movement in our industrial park. And I think this is really a great thing that's going to happen for the city, that we can finally see that industrial park be built out as it was intended many, many, many years ago. We do have the requested action in the memo from our city manager. I'm looking for somebody to move that forward.
Make a motion to approve the donation agreement with GCC-2 LLC, a Michigan limited liability corporation. Address is 6267 Aurelius Road, Lansing, Michigan, 48911.
All right, thank you. Do I have support?
Thank you.
Yes, Steve. I mean, sorry, John.
I can be Steve.
I know, I'm like looking here, sorry.
He's much more handsome.
John, yes.
I was, I wasn't sure what the thought was.
Yes, we could get questions, discussion, yes.
I'm going to be voting no, and primarily I believe that we are rushing a vote. I know that everybody's excited, but I believe we're rushing. I believe it's fiscally irresponsible that we would give a pass to this year's taxes from Granger. I believe that we should wait a few weeks so that they could pay the taxes for this year, for land that they did not develop, that they have been promising to develop for the last 20 to 25 years. And in fact, if we are not successful in marketing, we will be losing hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes if we don't successfully develop. And finally, it's not adequately addressed why we feel that as a city, we can be more successful in developing that property than a professional development company. I think we're rushing and I would beg you to at least table this discussion until January.
All right, I'm going to let our city manager respond to that. I have a feeling that it's going to be a response regarding timeline, the amount of taxes that Granger actually pays. I know that summer taxes were just collected. So, John, if you'd like to respond?
Yeah, Article 1.7, taxes and utilities. A donor will be responsible for paying the 2025 summer tax bill and the 2025 winter tax bill to be billed December 1st for the entire parcel. So the taxes for the current year are in there. As far as the valuation, the total, from that vacant property, all entities, the total tax captured annually is about $42,000. For the city of Williamson, it's probably about $5,000 and change. As far as our ability to market it, earlier tonight, you approved a Tifa amendment or set the public hearing for a Tifa amendment that includes a deal for, which was a blighted piece of property that, that prior to me being here, there were stops and starts on that for 20 years. So I'm supremely confident that giving vacant industrial land and the appropriate zoning, that it will be, won't be easy, but it will be, it won't be as much of an insurmountable task as it was for the, for the ice house sale.
Comment on that?
Yes, Terry?
Lawn Stars is a good example. I think Lawn Stars would be out in the industrial area now if it wasn't a Granger property. If we owned that property, but Lawn Stars came to us and wanted to build out there, they'd be out there now. But they, they had to go to Granger because Granger owned it. And Granger, so, 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 so. So, yeah, I think we'll be able to do it.
All right, Scott, Holly?
Do you perceive this as a gift or do you perceive it would be taken advantage of somehow?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't have presented to you, all of you, for a vote if I thought we were taking advantage of. I would have kindly said no, and then the property owner would, would have done what most people do. When I, unfortunately, I have to tell them no, they would have reached out to you all individually and tried to lobby you that way. And then we'd be back here again. But again, a couple of things as far as like Granger's role in this. I mean, certainly, nobody, nobody should, should fault them for selling property previously and wanting to be the builder for that. That's for them, that's good business sense. So I don't know, I don't see any, any issue with that. But, but again, there's been, I wouldn't say dozens, but there's been probably six to 10, just in the short time that I've been here, entities that have been interested in, in land and various forms of land out there. So I'm confident that we'll be able to do something good there in a short period of time. By short, I mean less than, less than 20 years. I think the next couple of years would be totally realistic to have something developed there. As long as there isn't too much, I guess, a higher expectation that we're going to get the, the one right company that, you know, prints gold and, you know, defies it for us.
I think one thing to point out is that we do have activity happening on that South Putnam I-96 corridor. We've had our planning commission go through the master plan with language that it, we are hoping to make that more attractive, more useful space with it being light industrial in the industrial park. We know that we've got tailgaters going out right there at the intersection heading north into town. I believe it's U of M has their new urgent care that is out next to the senior center. The senior center is active out there. Now, we also have the new Dollar General Market out there. There's activity that's happening on this. So I think this really puts Williamson in a very good position that if we find the right commercial realtor to work with us, we also have the ability to rewrite those plats of land. And I think that was the biggest problem that Lawn Stars had when they came and wanted was the parcel didn't fit their needs and there was no wiggle room with Granger. So we have the ability to do something really unique with that. I also would like to say too, that now that it would be under the city of Williamson's control, we have the ability to really drive our own destiny with that property. We can get creative with it. We can market it ourselves. I don't think that's going to take a lot of effort. We can also go to MEDC or to LEAP and say, we are in control of this property now. We would like to see what you can do for us. LEAP is our economic development arm for Ingham County. So let's put them to task and see what they can do for us as well. And I do believe that city manager John Hanifin did say that if we sell just one parcel, that tax revenue is going to substantially surpass what Granger was paying in taxes. So just to say on one parcel, we're going to see quite an increase in our, in our taxable revenue out there. Yes, John?
Yeah.
Got to read this one.
And that wasn't, I don't believe that that was communicated with the 2025 taxes at our last meeting. So I, I would draw that objection, but I was a seating member on the EDC Tifa when we approved the great sale that everybody was so excited about, the Granger. So I'm a little jaded on anything having to do with that particular company.
You have history. I appreciate it. And I appreciate your history, just like I appreciate Scott's history from being on councils previously. Alrighty, so I do, yes, Terry?
One thing, thank you to Granger. They're doing this as a man pretty much for free.
Absolutely.
Are you guys from Granger by chance?
We're not.
All right. So we do have a motion on the table. I'm looking for support.
Support.
All right. Oh, okay, sorry. It's been such a discussion. All right, so we have a motion, we have support. Great discussion, by the way. Holly, will you call the role, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Alrighty, our last action item for the evening is sidewalk repairs. We do have a memo in here from our city manager. I'm going to turn that over. It looks like we've got some repairs for sidewalks that are in great need of repair.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. We did get quotes from three different companies for quite a number of locations. Wouldn't say scattered, most of them are bundled on Putnam and Cedar. There's also quite a stretch on Church Street over the corner of Rowley and Church. So as I said, we did get three quotes. They're all reasonably comparable. LD Clark did some work for us last, last summer on sidewalks, but Able was the, they weren't the lowest bidder, but their bid was the most complete. And they also included wire mesh on those cedar locations and also Putnam location where we had some issues with trees. And that was at their recommendation. So staff is recommending that you select Able concrete for their quoted price of $33,534. Those sidewalks will be paid from, primarily from major streets, but also local streets. And there's a couple that are listed on the quotes that say City Hall, please. And that's actually. and that's actually for the stretches sidewalk that go across the drive for the police driveway and also for the driveway over here.
And John, if we were to pass this, when would this take place?
Almost immediately.
Okay, alright, so it would be done before?
Yeah, and the idea there, we want to certainly get this done before any kind of winter conditions.
Winter conditions, alright, okay. And it's a very thorough quote from Able. Terry?
This is on the par with keeping the roads paved. As far as people noticing whether the city is doing its job or not, sidewalks.
Sidewalks matter.
I think I've heard more about sidewalks than probably anything else. People saying, why are these sidewalks so awful? So, good thing to do.
Yep, we're taking care of that. And I think people that walk on Grand River in front of animal behavior station are going to be thrilled. I've seen that mentioned. I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
Make a motion that the, that's the city select Able Concrete for their quoted price of $33,534.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Ludwig, call the roll, please. Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yeah.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Alright, that concludes our action items for the evening. Discussion items are three usual suspects, construction project update, master plan update, and main four safety improvements. Mr. Hannafin?
I don't have much for construction project updates. I mean, we're going to have a lot of sidewalks underway here in a short order, so that's good. High Street is essentially closed out. There's, we'll have a little bit of, we'll have a bill to pay for re-reli at our next council meeting. We'll only have a small amount of retainage because they did a really good job. And really, the only thing that's outstanding is making sure that the areas that they had restoration on, on the banks, on the lawns, where they come in, so that's good. Master plan, nothing new. We haven't had a meeting since, or planning commission meeting since our last meeting. And for main four safety improvements, I talked to Wes Mullin earlier today. And he does have the, he's, has submissions into MDA. And again, we're still waiting. He's hopeful that we're able to get some traction on that. We were invited to a meeting with MDA and their staff for the signal for the intersection. That's in a couple of weeks, I believe. And so, we'll have more to report at the October 13th meeting, meeting on the progress for the new signal.
Alright, any questions for John regarding those three items? No? Alright, moving along, correspondence received. We do not have any. So, we're going to jump right into our department head reports and right back to John.
We've heard from me quite a bit tonight, so I'm going to shut up at this point.
Okay.
But the only thing I do want to add, two things. One, homecoming was, we have the ability now through some analytic tools that we bought the subscription to, to get some idea on how many people in aggregate attend our events. And our homecoming, again, keeps breaking records. The two most attended events in town per that analytic tool are the lights parade and homecoming. So, that's pretty cool. And then, sort of along with that, I had a really good meeting with the farmers market leadership and the market manager about a week ago. And the mayor was able to join us on the phone call for that, and we had some really good discussions. And we were able to share some of their analytic data. So, their, the market attendance, it was a little bit dipped down yesterday because of the bad weather, but they're, for late summer, early fall, their participation numbers are really up. So, that's good.
Absolutely. It's always good to know people are coming to Williamson. Chief, how are you?
I am great, thank you. The only thing I would add tonight is the next council meeting's October 13th. City Orange 66145, no parking, 2:00 to 5:00 starts October 1st. We'll be lenient on that during the month of October and try and educate people with flyers. So, instead of citations.
I appreciate that. Can you give us a little recap of homecoming, Friday night in town?
Yeah.
If you all survived?
It was busy.
Good.
I think, of course, all the reserve officers and NISA were helping with directing traffic. I hazard a guess, the parade was actually bigger and more well-attended than Jubilee Parade. It was, there was a lot of people in town.
Friday Night Lights?
Yep.
Football's a big thing, and the homecoming's even bigger. And so, it's great to know that our downtown is always busy on activities like that.
It was. It's alright.
Alright, thanks. We have our Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering there who issues permits for new construction, renovations, business, residential. So, if you see something on there that you have a question on, please reach out to our city manager, John Hannafin, and he would be more than happy to contact Livingston County and get those questions answered for you. Committee, subcommittee reports, I'll start down. Anyone? Meeting that you attended?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I got to do the fun one.
Yeah, NISA?
Parks and Rec.
Oh, Parks and Rec.
John was not able to be there, so I was, I was the guy. He was off in Omaha and Nebraska.
No, 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 understand. It was a game that was not on my daughter's schedule for my granddaughter.
Oh, gotcha.
And it, in other words, we didn't know until 24 hours in advance.
So, John had a really good excuse.
Yeah, family first.
Because she's on the traveling team, we only get to about a third of the games because she's off in Tampa, Florida, and Omaha, we're not going to go to those.
Right.
So, that's why I wanted, anyway.
Well, thanks, thanks for filling it.
I got to do the fun thing, and there were two things that happened there. One was this chainsaw art in the park. And I've forgotten what her name is, the other.
Lina? Is it Lina? Or is it Heather Gulecza?
It was Lina Chapman.
Lina Chapman.
Right, right. She was there to talk about the things that are going to happen. There was a flyer, and I didn't keep the flyer, should have kept the flyer.
That's alright.
But it's going to be great. I mean, I think one of the reasons why the Jubilee traffic was less than the traffic for the homecoming is because the weather is so much better. It's not 95 degrees with 95% humidity, you know? So, this thing happening in October, what a great idea. And that's going to be really fun. Okay, the other thing at the parks was a Gaga pit.
What is a Gaga pit?
None of us are under the age of 30. Does anybody on the council know what a Gaga pit is?
No.
I know now, because I'm a part of the.
You know now, yeah. Well, there was one at the Chainsaw Thing.
Okay.
Those were in the middle. So, there's a, you know, you walk around in the parks anyway. You'll see these things that are, they're, an Eagle Scout project built this thing, right? So, there's an Eagle Scout guy here. He's a 10th grader, right? But, I mean, it was really impressive. He presented this thing about building a Gaga pit over in McCormick Park, near where the playground things are for little kids. So, it'll be kind of a kid thing, and it'll be right next to Lundy Jason. And the way it has to happen is he's got to find a place to donate the materials, and then he has to organize people that'll actually donate their time to build it. He can't build the thing himself.
Sure.
And these are teenagers, so he can't buy him beer. So, I guess, a lot of it begins with exchange.
It's root beer. But can you give a better definition? What is this pit? What is its purpose? Gaga? I don't, what?
I do not know what a Gaga pit is.
Okay, we're going to have to Google it.
It's a, just.
You know what it is?
So, unlike the Lord of the Flies dodgeball that we played with the baseballs that could, you know, take your head off, it's dodgeball below the waist, essentially.
Oh, okay.
And it's in an octagon. And, you know, my kids are, they're older now. They're, they were in the early onset Gaga ball players. So, it's a pretty common thing with, you know, junior high to elementary, junior high.
Interesting.
Let's see if you can get my Granger over again. Yeah, I researched it after, like, two months ago that we had this thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it's big time, because they have it at their schools.
Well, I think that's great, so an Eagle Scout.
An Eagle Scout guy is going to do this, or he's going to organize it. MDC lumber is already volunteering all the lumber, because it's pressure-trained and 2x10s.
Alright.
I think they're eight feet long, and there's eight of them. It's octagonal. So, I think the size of the thing, I don't know that it would fit in this area right here, but it's a little bigger than our horseshoe kind of thing.
Okay. Exciting. Scott?
So, I went to the cemetery, meeting we met at the cemetery to discuss green burial issues. They're going to put in a archway, some other stuff going on there, so there was a meeting there for that. And then, I was a substitute at the meeting where, I can't tell how enthusiastic that the Ice House is going to be stayed. It's been like, it's just been in the back of my mind, like, I hope that works out somehow, and now it's going to. So, I'm pretty psyched with it.
Yeah, it's going to be great.
It doesn't look like much from the outside, but inside it's like, oh, this is cool.
Yeah, we really need, really need. It's really nice that the co-owners came forward and they want to repurpose that building and keep the historical architecture of it. And so, that's really fabulous.
And this won't be their first historical building that they have to restart. They know they've done this before.
Yeah.
So, then the NISA, okay?
Okay.
So, I should report on the NISA?
Yes.
Okay. The theme of the NISA meeting was over the top. It was 20-something people in this room, and they're all hating on me because I asked the chief to make this report. Now, this accusation from Dorothy that I, let's see, I did, I used accusations and slander. The accusations are two. One, that the chief lied to me when I asked him for this report. And I, I mean, it was just the two of us in the room. I don't know if I, it was no recording or anything like that, but I asked the chief to produce this, to tell me this stuff, to make a report to the board that had this information in it. And the chief said, oh, there's no way. I just have to, no, there's no way, there's no time, no time to do that. It's kind of stupid anyway. And, well, it turns out that he does have enough time because it's the same report that I was asking for, is the report that goes in the Fowlerville News and Views newspaper, right? Dorothy has a couple of those over there. So, that was a lie. And I think the chief sees it as kind of like a white lie or something like that. It wasn't that big a deal. When people ask him what they do for emergency response, he always gives them that kind of thing. So, it's not really a lie. It's just kind of their standard boilerplate response to the question, what did you do? So, that's the request. My request to him is, report to me, for $4 million a year that you get for emergency services, please report to me, to the board, what those emergency services were. Pretty much what I'm asking for is what comes out in the Fowlerville News and Views. Two additional data points on that. What response from 61, what response from 62? That's the additional data points. So, that's, so the timeline is that I asked the chief for this report on Tuesday. He lies to me, he appusicates, and that's on Tuesday. On Thursday, we have the first NISA meeting where it was a big deal, and everybody, the NISA employees were there, and everybody was hating on me because I was asking for this report. And then, last Thursday, we have another NISA meeting, and NISA actually went out and they got some microphones. So, they have something like this, like this thing right here. They put a couple of tables in the middle out there, and they put microphones on the tables so that they could record me. Then they had a video camera that they put over there. They didn't have, they just put it up there. It's a video camera over there. So, they're videoing and audio-taping as, as all these people are hating on me because I'm asking for this report. And it was, so the theme is over the top. This is just an over-the-top response to a pretty simple request on my part. So, here's the parallel, and this is important. Franz, I'm unwilling to say that the NISA organization is corrupt, okay? But I am willing to say that there are things that point in that direction. And those things are as follows. Trump was inaugurated this year in January, February, I think it was. Elon Musk sent an email to all the federal employees saying, tell me, in response to this email, the five things that you accomplished last week. And the response from the, from the bureaucrats was pandemonium. It was, it was firestorm. Why do you, how could you dare to ask this thing? I can't possibly do that. So, and, and their response, the character of their response pointed to the fact, for all the rest of us that don't work in the government area, pointed to the rest of us that those people are corrupt. We don't know, we can't prove it. But their response, when they're told to justify their jobs, their response being so over the top tells all the rest of us, if there's something going on, okay? We don't know what it is. We know there's something going on. So, I'm sad to report it, but the chief has blown this thing up completely, and I think that indicates that there's something going on. I don't know what it is that's going on, but I can't come up with a good reason why Chief Ants won't give me this report. So, something's going on.
I'd rather have to challenge you on one thing.
Okay, yep.
Sure.
I have to challenge you because the five things that were supposed to be reported, how do you know who reported those and who didn't?
Who reported what?
I think he's talking about those.
You suggested that NISA has a problem because they didn't report the five things challenged by Musk.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no, he was making a parallel. He was, he was comparing.
So, I'm now filing on what it is.
Oh, the parallel, the parallel was this, that Musk asks federal employees, what did you do last week?
Time card.
And their response is, wow. And the fact that they won't just say, oh, these are the five things. The fact that they, their response is that, that tells all the rest of us that those guys, they're probably corrupt. There's shield.
But what's that to do with NISA?
So, I think he's saying the same thing.
NISA's response is similar to that. I asked them for a simple report, and NISA's response is, wow, over the top. Firestorm. 20 people. I mean, this, this is not, they had, there were 20, there was a room full of 20 people. And they're all, I mean, and they were angry, and they were aggressive, and it was, yeah.
So, I'm going to put a cap on that, alright? So, I did have a conversation with Dorothy.
Yeah.
I don't agree completely with, completely with what she said. I asked her if the data could be provided by 911, because when we all have an emergency, we pick up the phone, we call 911. We don't call the fire department directly. So, the 911 dispatch would have the most accurate data for the calls that are being called out to Station 61, Station 62. I asked her if that's where NISA is pulling their data from. She actually confirmed that, yes, that is, that's where they're pulling it from. Secondly, I asked Dorothy to ask Chief Ants to meet with myself, my NISA board rep, my city manager. I have not heard back from them at all. So, her being here this evening does not satisfy my request of meeting with Chief Ants, my city manager.
Oh, well, she said it did.
Right, and that is not correct.
Can I add one more, one more data point? Go ahead, yeah, sorry.
I just want to make two observations. So, it sounds like there is going to be, well, previous year request, was there any summary report as a board member that you were provided?
Yeah, that's the appusication thing. That's that.
There wasn't a report provided.
No report provided for the previous year? Did you receive a previous year report from NISA that you requested?
Dorothy produced something similar to what I requested.
Okay, for the previous year?
Not for the, for the previous month.
Was, but much like we get a police report, a monthly report from, from our police chief, there's not, I'm not familiar with the entire NISA packet, because I don't think they're online. But is there a report of monthly activities provided to the board and to the public?
Right, but it's goofy. It's, it's a, it's a smokescreen.
But what, but, okay, Terry, can I ask something? When you go to a NISA meeting, is there a report that's handed to all of the board members?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you receive an actual report in the NISA meeting. You're just not okay with the numbers that's being provided?
I'm not okay with the format they're being provided.
Okay, but it sounds like that's going to change now because they're getting all of the data from 911 and the receptionist.
They might.
From, so, when the new report comes out, will you compare and see if it's any better?
Absolutely.
Alright.
Is that information fully available?
Yeah, it would be fully available because it's true that 911 dispatch.
There you go.
Just, just kind of the last thing on the report. I mean, I, I find it a little bit odd that we have to get a printed copy of the, what is it, the Fowlerville News?
It's the Fowlerville News that they publish it in.
For the report for Williamson data?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I found that out.
That's what we're.
And the last thing, the last thing, and then I'll, I'll shut up.
That's okay.
So, it sounds like they're recording their meetings now. That's great.
I would like to know, and I'm going to task you with this, at your next NISA meeting, I'd like to know if the same setup is there, or if it was a one-time off?
I'm curious about that as well. It's the only time I've been at a NISA meeting when they were recording everything. So, one more data point is this. When the chief had the time to speak at that meeting, the first thing he said, and I think it was the first thing he said, was that he had talked to a lawyer about suing me for character-defining law or something.
Yeah, defamation of character.
That's part of the, part and parcel of the whole over-the-top response.
Alright, well, thank you very much for that update. Do either of you have things that you'd like to share information on? I know that planning hasn't, Matt?
I've always had.
Yeah, you had your something, Terry.
Can we get a justice duty for the NISA thing?
No. No. Alrighty, well, we have another opportunity for audience participation. Okay, if you can come forward, please. Again, this is participation. We're not going to engage in dialogue.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you for what you said about all these restrictions on the golf carts. They're picking on the old people. Most old people drive slow. And I don't think there's going to be any accidents with the golf carts. But I do object to the seat belt thing. Now, can, is there some way that we could get some mics set up? Because I don't know if I'm hard of hearing or not, but some of the people that talk low, we can't hear them back there. Is there some way that you could?
We'll take that under advisement. We'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi.
Hello. My name is Faith from Phil, and I'm a surf internet. And so, I'm up here this week doing some visiting around Powell here. And so I'm up here this week doing some visiting around Powell here, Linden, just some of these markets. I'm actually from northwest Indiana, but I do cover parts of Michigan, and I'm a regional market manager for Surf. So we're about a year in to us having come in and brought internet. I'm a great contact if you've had problems. I have a stack of business cards with me. If you have concerns or anything, one of the things I cherish the most about working for Surf is we're very transparent. So even if there's problems, we want to know, we want to fix it. So I really just wanted to introduce myself, say thank you. We love our communities, and I was taking notes on your most attended events. And we, we're all love sponsoring and being a part of the community however we can. So I just brought a beautiful face to the company. Thank you for letting me come. The internet's fast, but you don't need a seatbelt with it in case you haven't purchased yet. All right.
If you can make sure to get our managers some of your business cards.
Absolutely.
Do you have a question?
I do, I have Surf. I did buy it about a month and a half or so ago. It's great, except for the fact, on the updates. When we get an update, it knocks it out.
So typically, we do our maintenance overnight. But are you saying this is happening during the day?
It happened a couple of times, yeah.
Okay.
But if there was another, I said, please do them at two o'clock in the morning or something like that.
So usually, I mean, usually we do. And we try to be proactive about emailing people, hey, we're going to do maintenance tonight, it might be down for eight minutes or ten. If you're having a consistent drop, call the eight-hundred number.
I've called them a couple of times.
And is that responding to that they were doing?
They're great. And you know what? I got someone who speaks English. I found that very nice when I called. And I, you know, because I had wild, but it's been great so far.
It's, it's one of the things I love, another thing I love about Surf, I tell people, when you call customer support, you get Indiana, not the other. And so all of our customer service are based out of Portland. So when we, we say we work, live, and play in our communities, we work, live, and play in our communities. I was in Powell, it might be Chamber.
Yeah, that's that too.
The golf course over there for the Hell Chamber golf outing today. And I just had so many people saying, that was one of their favorite things, they'd get somebody local that could understand them. And again, we're here, our goal is to connect people to high-speed internet in an affordable manner. We're not all trying to buy yachts or anything, we're just trying to make a business run. But thank you so much if you have us. If not, I urge you to go check us out.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Can I hand him my cards now?
Yeah, sure.
I didn't know if there was a horse field or something.
No, there's not.
I'm just going to go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. All right, I will start down here with Tim, council member comments.
I'm good.
Scott? I'm sorry, oh, we have one more. I'm sorry. My apologies. Franz, come on up.
My name's Franz Wilbrandt, I'm NISA primary alternate board member. Mr. Hanson, you came on in February without doing your homework to see what was before. You questioned how to read a budget, how budgets are done and stuff. It got to the point where it was ridiculous. You also started asking for a report. You've been given the report, you've been told you have the report, you're still grumbling about the report you're already getting, going to get. And the fact that three months ago, you started out accusing NISA of being corrupt. Not just at anybody, the whole NISA organization, which would include you. But when asked why, you never answered. All you said was smokescreen, smokescreen. I think you're blowing a smokescreen. Now, you wanted different definitions of sixty-one and sixty-two. We've worked harder, I've been on the NISA board, involved in NISA for over twenty years to unify NISA as one organization, not two. When you start splitting up groups, you get a lot of different things going on. You, you were asked for it and you received everything basically almost that you've asked, but then you keep asking the same question over and over. And when I asked you at last week's meeting, where is your proof? You gave me a smokescreen. You couldn't provide anything. I says, you're talking, but you don't say, say, here is my proof, black and white. If you can't prove it, and you talked about the meeting last month with all the people, they came on their own and stuff because there was talk that you wanted to go back to a paid-on-call organization instead of full-time. And that's why those members told you they could not become paid-on-call because they did not live in the district. So we would lose a lot of help and stuff. That was explained to you too, but you choose to change your words around. And then, to top it all off, last month, last week, you didn't say anything about, you talked about NISA being corrupt. And when pushed on, you basically called right out straight, you said, the chief is corrupt. Asked for proof, you can't provide nothing. You're making assumptions on not proof. So I've asked Dorothy and stuff, and I'm going to ask you right now. I think, because he represents the city and the city council, there needs to be a joint meeting, figure this out, because this has been going on for too long and stuff, between the city council and NISA board.
I asked Dorothy for a meeting with Mike, and I've not heard anything back.
No, I'm not saying Mike, I said Dorothy. I said the entire NISA board.
I'd like to meet with Mike first.
Well, given the way he's been treated by Mr. Hanson, I think he'd be reluctant to want to meet privately with anybody. Because Mr. Hanson, all he does is make accusations. I'm not calling you a liar, but you're not telling the truth. But you sure put up on a hell of a smokescreen all the time. So if you want answers, provide the proof. Quit making accusations that are based on assumptions. I'm tired of it, everybody else is tired of it. If you can't follow through and do things properly, then maybe you ought to be dismissed off the NISA board and get somebody that does care.
So Franz, what I'll ask of you, and I asked the same of Dorothy, and since you're the member at large, I'd like a meeting with Mike. And if it's Mike, Dorothy, myself, and my city manager, that's what I would like first before we bring a full council and a full NISA board together. So if you could extend that message to Mike and ask him that. And he has my phone number. I actually just texted him over the weekend about burn vans because it's so dry.
Yeah.
And we had a good conversation back and forth. But in my official capacity, if you could extend that.
I'll do my best to do it. But I can see where his reluctance is, especially after being flat-out called in the meeting, corrupt. The chief is corrupt. That's his exact words.
What I'm asking though is for myself, for Mike, Dorothy, who's the chair, I'm the mayor, and for my city manager. Let's get those four together. We won't bring Mr. Hanson into it, and let's see if the four of us can meet first.
Okay.
Okay.
If not, I'll be willing to sit in for Dorothy.
Okay. Thank you, Franz.
You're welcome.
Do I have anybody else for audience participation? Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Rick Jones, one nineteen Block Street. Let me, quick. I just want to thank everybody again. I thanked you a few meetings ago for everything you've done with the golf cart ordinance and everything you guys have put together. I know it's been a headache, but I appreciate everything you've done, you know? And you took it, you, you've taken it, you didn't just blow it off, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for being here, Rick.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else at this time? All right. Go ahead, Terry, come on up.
Okay. One of the things was the registration. Do we have an example of what kind of information is going to be required on registration?
So Terry, what I'll tell you is because we haven't officially passed the ordinance yet, we do not have that in place, but we'll work to make sure we have that pending that this ordinance passes with the, with a vote of the council. Right now, we've just approved the first ordinance, first reading.
They're asking for a registration.
I, I understand that. And we're going to go ahead and get those forms put together. We'll figure out what that sticker's going to look like.
And will that be presented ahead of the vote?
Yes, if we can go ahead and let's see what we can Google for registration forms.
Because how can we make a decision on?
I can't guarantee you that this is going to pass. Even though we had a first reading.
I, I didn't say that.
So we're going to do our best to make sure we bring everything forward and have that available.
Like I said, I did not say that. I'm asking, you know, you're asking us to place great trust in what should have been simple and is turning into a fiasco. I mean, it shouldn't be that difficult. And, uh, how do we know? What do, you know, maybe I'm going to come back and say, hey, I don't like your registration for it. It's none of your business. What kind, you know, do I have to show proof that I have insurance? Because that's, that's how it's looking here. And even if everything goes smooth right now, I mean, everything, and it is passed, it will be November, I believe, fourteenth before we would be able to even drive the golf cart. And you have, the ordinance has read to sunset it at, what, two years and twenty-seven? So basically, a little over a year, because most part is not going to be during the winter months. You're not going to be, get a good read on what the information you're looking for is. You're just going to suddenly have all these people out on the road, driving, and the people that say, oh, it's not safe, it's not this, it's not that. Have you ever stopped to ask them exactly what it is they're saying isn't safe about it? The speed limit in town is twenty-five, period. If they, and the streets aren't that long, and the major roads are double-wide, you can't park on both sides of the street. So it's very easy to get by a golf cart. So I'm, I'm just finding this to be extremely frustrating when Mr. Pelzolo was here at the beginning of this past year in the winter months. And this is all the further we are? Shame on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else for audience participation? All right, council member comments? I think Tim, you already said nothing. Did you change your mind?
Yes, no, I have not changed.
Okay.
Yes, I have not changed my mind.
Terry? Anything from you?
No.
John, Terry, is anybody? No, that's okay.
Yeah, did you change your mind?
John?
No.
No, Terry?
I have not changed my mind. That's okay.
All right. You know what? I don't have any comments either this evening. So we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting, seven twenty-two.